So we all set for me to start? Are we recording?
We are.
Okay. Then with that, I will welcome you. Hello. Welcome to the April 6, 2023, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Chair Noah Levy, presiding tonight. Before we call the meeting to order, I just wanted to mention, as always, we have several different ways that you can participate or watch. And if you look at page two of the meeting agenda, those public comment options and instructions are laid out there pretty clearly. If you're on a computer and you wish to participate in the meeting in any way, it is always best to use Zoom. And there's a link, there's a Zoom link. Is there a Zoom link? Is that the issue? Okay, it's on the first page. Yes, of course, it is. It's on the first page, actually, of the agenda. You can also, of course, participate by phone, as always. But if you are watching on Ledgestar, Ledgestar, which is the website that carries the live feed, just be aware that that feed runs 20 to 30 seconds behind the live meeting. So if you pick up the phone and are going to try to make comment, you'll need to make sure that you're not, you know, that you're there a little bit earlier than the feed would show. Hope that's clear. With that said, let's call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to item B on the agenda. Commissioners present, could we have a roll call vote, please, Laura? Or not vote, sorry, just a attendance call.
Ivor Scavdall, present. Thank you. Thomas Mulder?
Present.
Noah Levy?
Present.
Lennox Landry?
Lonex.
Lonex.
Present.
Landry, thank you. Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. I do just want to mention that I was prepared to welcome the newest Commissioner, Sarah West, who is the new at-large Commissioner. Her name is on the agenda. She is even here in the audience, but unfortunately, she's not able to join us tonight on the dais because she hasn't been formally sworn in yet. So we'll see you next time. And on that note, I just wanted to also mention that since our last meeting, Commissioner Melanie McCawver's term has ended as at-large, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank her for her years of service. She brought great attention to and knowledge of environmental laws and sequel laws, and really added a lot to our commission. Okay, that brings us to item C, agenda modifications. Director, can I just check with you if there are any modifications to the agenda?
Yeah, there is just one. We're going to ask that item number four, Healing Sun, be removed from the consent calendar and continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
The reason for the continuance is unfortunately in the title. It says it's in the Willow Creek area. It's actually in the Edersburg area.
Yeah, I noticed that, and so I was wondering if that was a problem, if that was enough to have to renotice it.
Yeah, we're not going to renotice it. Our notices are correct.
Oh, okay.
Only the agenda is incorrect.
Agenda is incorrect, yes. Okay, noted. So we will pull that from the agenda and then have a separate vote to continue. Okay, sure. Well, then, the next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. That is the time in the meeting for anyone either in person or on Zoom to make a comment about matters that pertain to the planning commission or the planning department's jurisdiction, but not items that are on tonight's agenda. Those will all have separate public comment. So do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment on a matter not on the agenda? Okay, then come on up, and we'll do the in-person comments first. Thank you.
Dear esteemed members of the commission, my name is Isaac Young, and I'm a senior at Eureka High School.
Turn on this mic, please.
Oh.
Do you have a button?
Where is that button? Is that the three-minute? Oh, is it this one? Not that one? The other one, podium, yeah.
Okay. Dear esteemed members of the commission, my name is Isaac Young, and I'm a senior at Eureka High School. The recent amount of rain, snow, and odd weather patterns are no stranger to Humboldt County, but it also serves as a reminder. Climate change is real, and it's upon us and will affect Eureka and Humboldt Bay and all of Humboldt County more than most other cities in the United States. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, as well as the Humboldt Bay Keeper, estimate the water will rise by approximately 2.3 feet by 2050. This means Murray Field and all the businesses on Jacobs Avenue will be standing in standing water by then. Some of the, some of Eureka by the Myrtle Town area will be underwater or in danger of it. Both Highway 101 and 255 will consistently be underwater. Much of the low-lying area around Arcata will be underwater. The golf course will be underwater. The highway by College of the Redwoods will be underwater. Ciara and Lolita will be in danger soon after. But what can all of these issues be mitigated with? A railroad. The Denver Heritage Association is able to operate scooter rides along much of the Humboldt Bay corridor, but with a largely dilapidated track, it is and will continue to get harder and harder to continue these rides. This is why I propose a commuter rail. If your goal is to save the highway, one of the solutions you are exploring is raising the berm. If you were to do so, this would not only save the highway, but also provide the possibility of a railroad public transit system. With the current walking trail they hope to achieve by the summer of 2024, instead of utilizing the berm for walking and biking only, creating a multimodal trail that would serve both rail, walking, and biking would be a better alternative to help get cars off the road. Now, where would this system run? In total, there would be six principal stops. The California Redwood Coast Humboldt County Airport, California Polytechnic University Humboldt, Arcata, Arcata Transit Center, Eureka Old Town, College of the Redwoods, and either Fortuna High School or in the area of Strong's Creek Drive, South Fortuna Boulevard, and Eel River Drive. Other stops along this route, specifically the cities of Rio Dale and Scotia, Lolita, Fields Landing and King Salmon, Blue Lake, Manila, and McKinleyville proper, all have the potential to be future stop locations. I want to focus on the Eureka Old Town stop in specific, however. Ideally, this would be 15 to 18 feet above Commercial Street, the only road bisecting the balloon track, allowing through traffic to continue to operate. Upgrading this area for high-speed rail will cost a lot of money already, and the contamination of the balloon truck will only add to the cost. However, not only will this eliminate a major eyesore for the city of Eureka, this will also open up new opportunities for businesses, low-income housing, and with its close proximity to Old Town, it would be a great way to bring in more tourism for Arts Alive and more. Finally, the Earth Center. Eureka's future transit hub could be instead relocated to this area, still providing enough room for all the amenities the city of Eureka wishes to include, and serve as the central hub for the Humboldt Transit Authority. All in all, I thank you for your time and hope you consider the benefits of a commuter rail system around Humboldt Bay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Are there any other members of the in-person audience wishing to make comment on matters not on the agenda? Okay, then we do have one hand up on Zoom. Can I just note, I didn't see the three minutes counter. Was that going on behind me?
No, it wasn't. I didn't start it.
Okay, but we can get that going now. Okay, thank you so much. So I will now give the mic, as it were, to the public 5288 caller on Zoom. It's your three minutes.
Ken Swatki, when I'm speaking, I cannot see the three minutes. It's kind of nice to kind of in the background here, 30 seconds or something like Steve Madrone does when he speaks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks. And I'll give you 30-second warning.
Oh, that's fine. I won't need it, probably. Well, I do find it kind of interesting, and I totally support what the prior speaker said there, that so many third-world countries are able to have good transit systems. Mexico is far superior to ours. Somehow or another, they can do it, but we can't here. And I always encourage people not to, maybe it's the autism they claim to have, think out of the box, and these ideas are out of the box, but I think they're well worth considering as a. So I had an interesting conversation with somebody, and it kind of made sense a little bit to me. My question then was, which country has done the best to deal with climate change and things in the whole world? And somebody guessed China, and I had to say, you're right. China has reduced their population by approximately 50%. So in dealing with climate change and in dealing with these things, maybe people need to look at the alternative. Maybe some of the things they're doing wrong, but anyway, your carbon imprint is half as big without the population, without any changes. I did want to speak a little bit about land use issues in your sister city there of Arcata. They're going through a very large process there. They seem to be moving very rapidly. A lot of people would like to see that slowed down. So when you're doing processes, which you may be doing soon, such as changing the general plan designations or changing the zoning to be compatible with your general plan designation. The other day, I suggested that, you know, that John Ford, and he took it, or somebody took it as if they were moving too slow. I was saying they were moving too slow. It should move faster. But my thing was, my comment is, the supervisors need to do and fund the planning and your people so you can make, go forward and make the zoning compatible with the general plan designation. It takes some money to do it. It takes staff, or you go to outside consultants, and that's kind of what I actually recommend they do, and then they bring that before you. So I strongly support you lobbying the supervisors to go ahead and provide whatever tools John Ford needs in his tool belt to finish up the general plan, which has languished now for probably five years, if I recall right, since the general plan designations were done with no zoning. The unclassified still exists.
About 30 seconds left, Ken.
Thank you for the prompt on the time. I really appreciate that. And so I'll let you get on with your meeting, and I appreciate you, what you're doing there. Melanie McCawver was great. I wish she's still there. That's my thought, so I concur. She was fantastic. Thank you. I'll do your speaker.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands raised on Zoom or phone, I am going to close that section of the agenda, the public comment on non-agenda items. Laura, if I may request, do you know how to make the timer display on the?
I did figure that out the last 30 seconds.
Okay, good. So we'll get that in future, just because it's helpful for everybody to be able to see.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item or section E, the consent agenda. And as usual, I'm going to run through those items and see if anyone, either any commissioners or any members of the audience in person or on Zoom wish to pull an item from consent for questions or discussion. The first item on consent is review and approval of the January 19, 2023 action summary. Third time's the charm. Okay, seeing no hands, we'll leave that on consent. How about item two, review and approval of the February 16, 2023? Yes?
My only hesitation, I would want to abstain from that, so I would ask if that gets removed from the consent, because I wasn't present at that meeting, so I don't think
Sure.
I'd want to vote on that as a whole.
In that case, we can pull it and vote on it separately, so you can abstain. I think that's the best way to do that. So then we will pull that one from consent. The third item is proposed street name change from Lake Benbow Drive to Benbow Inn Drive. Is there anyone? Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
Clarifying question, if I have to drive that road, should I abstain from that vote? I just, I didn't realize that literally was before us. I skipped past it.
I don't, there's no financial conflict there.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great, great to be clear. Is there anyone, anyone else wishing to pull that item for discussion or have any questions? Nope, then we'll leave that on consent. Item four is the item that Director Ford noted. We are going to pull that from consent and continue to the next meeting due to the mistake about on the agenda. The agenda says it's the Willow Creek area. It is actually the Eders Creek area. So that's Healing Sun LLC. We will pull that. Item five, Myers and Aquarian LLC in the New Harris area. Is there any commissioner or any member of the public who wishes to pull that for discussion?
I have some comments to make.
Then we will pull that one. Item six is Humboldt Kings LLC, also in the New Harris area. Anyone wishing to make comments or questions on that item?
Yes, I have a comment on that as well.
Okay, that will be pulled. And then I think I missed one there. Yes. Item seven is on the consent calendar, and I just want to note that is Cali's Finest Gardens LLC. The recommendation there is that it simply be continued to a date uncertain. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment on the continuance of Cali's Finest Gardens? Okay, seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item eight is American Hospital Management Corp. In the Willow Creek area, that item is recommended for denial, just want to clarify. And is there anyone here wishing to comment or questions about that one? Okay. Item nine is the Sun Ocean West Expansion LLC extension of a conditional use permit, special permit, and notice of merger in the McKinleyville area. Any questions or comments on that item? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Item 10 is the Hosford Final Map Subdivision Lot Line Adjustment and Special Permit Extension in the Cutton area. Any questions, comments, or need to discuss that? Seeing none, that will remain on consent. And then finally, item 11 is the Tony Elena Parcel Map Subdivision Extension in the McKinleyville area. Anyone wishing to pull that one for discussion? Nope. Okay, we'll leave that on consent. So to review, I have so we are going to, what I have is, we still have on consent items one, three, not four, not five, not six. Item seven, item nine, 10, and 11.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one, three, seven, and nine through 11 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion needed, then could we have a?
Can we have the motion? Who was first?
Sure. Commissioner Mitchell moved. I can restate that and clarify. And Commissioner Mulder seconded, I believe?
To approve, okay.
To approve items one, three, seven, nine, 10, 11 on the consent agenda.
Oh, dear. I've already. Let me do that again.
Do you need me to restate what, which ones it is?
No, just give me a minute, please.
No problem.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Yes, please. If we could have a roll call vote.
Ivor?
Scavdall, approved.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Lennox? Lonex.
Onex with an L, Lonex.
Lonex.
Aye.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to move that we approve item number two on the consent calendar.
Right, that would be the February 16 action item, action summary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mitchell moved, and Commissioner Scavdall seconded.
Just for point of discussion, there's been numerous times in the past where only four members were present at a meeting, and when the minutes came back to us, it was a different four folks. So traditionally, voting to approve minutes does not signify that you were there, just that they appear to be in inappropriate format and order. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulder.
So the reason I followed suit with that, there's, was more than one other time in the time I've served that it's, I've seen minutes polled and people abstained for the same reason I was asking to have them polled. So whatever protocol is, I'm totally fine to go forward with it. It doesn't matter to me either way. I thought I was following protocol.
Well, since we are having the discussion, I think it's worth checking in with county council about this issue. Obviously, a commissioner can always abstain whether you were there or not. And it could be your choice to abstain if you weren't there. But as a technical matter, can one vote yes or approve minutes when you weren't present?
It's perfectly acceptable to vote to approve minutes, even if you were not there. There have been in the past, I think, abstentions for stated reasons, but you don't have to abstain. It's a personal choice of the commissioner.
Okay. Thank you so much for qualifying that. All that said, always your choice, you're right to abstain if you wish. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote on approval of the February 16 action item, please, Laura?
So Thomas, are you abstaining?
When you call on my vote, you will find out.
Okay, gracious. Thank you. Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Lonex. Landry?
Aye.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Abstain.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Ivor Scavdall?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero with one abstention. Your hand's not up, is it? No, okay, just checking. All right, then that is the first item that was pulled. The second item that was pulled is item four, Healing Sun LLC. At staff's request, we are, I'm looking for a motion to continue that until?
April 20th.
April 20th.
Second.
Okay, we have Commissioner Mitchell moving, Commissioner Mulder seconding the continuance of Healing Sun LLC to the next meeting, which is April 20. And whenever you're ready, we could get a vote.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Ivor Scavdall?
Yes.
Lonex Landry?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item five on the agenda, Myers and Aquarian. Now, just as a kind of check-in on the process, if this was pulled by a member of the audience, I would, as a matter of course, ask that we have a staff report. Since, in my experience, staff reports can sometimes clarify or preempt the questions that the audience might have. If it's a commissioner, I want to just ask you if it's a quick question or if you would like to have a full discussion, which is totally fine.
I think on this, some discussion.
Great. That's, I think it's always good, especially when, when the agenda is as light as this one has proved to be, we can certainly take the time to have a staff report. So if we could get a report on this item, please.
So I have some comments. Does that warrant that we need the report?
I see no reason not to have a report.
Good evening. My name is Michael Holtermann. I'm the design planner for the Myers and Aquarian project. That's record number PLN 12124-CUP. First, the project location. Here we have it shown in relation to the Garberville and Benbow area, just to kind of get an idea of where the project is. Next, we have
Could we ask Michael to speak up, please?
I apologize, yes.
Yep, it is a little soft, if you can. Thank you.
So the next slide, we have a project overview, and after this overview, we'll delve into a couple topics in more detail, those being water and restoration work that's proposed for the property. So the cultivation is 24,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation. That's broken up into 20,800 square feet of light depth and 3,200 square feet of full sun outdoor. After restoration and relocation activities take place, the applicant is also proposing 2,400 square feet of ancillary nursery space. Processing would occur off-site with drying occurring on-site. As far as the water source, the applicant is proposing to use a 6 million gallon on-stream pond that is on an adjacent or neighboring property, rather, that would be subject to CDFW review and approval, as well as the state water board. If the pond cannot be approved, the applicant is proposing to use an existing water right and rainwater catchment off of the greenhouses to supply water in the amount of 270,000 gallons, as well as obtain 270,000 gallons of hard water tank storage. Some conditions I'd like to bring to your attention are conditions A18, which is that the applicant shall record a contingent easement regarding the ongoing use and maintenance of the pond, as well as condition A19, which requires the applicant to obtain an encroachment permit to run the irrigation line under Harris Road. The energy source for the project is currently solar and a generator. The applicant did propose to switch to PG&E in the future, but there is a condition in the staff report that requires the applicant to transition from mixed generator and solar use to a minimum of 80% renewable energy by 2026. The restoration work proposed is removal of all cannabis-related materials, replanting with native species, and then two areas are subject to an oak woodland restoration plan, and that includes restocking 0.7 acres of the cultivation area and enhancement of a 2.8 acre area. The evaluation would be prepared by an RPF, and monitoring and reporting would need to be completed by an RPF or a qualified biologist, and that would be a five-year minimum. So now we'll kind of get into water a little bit more. The CMM L U O requires forbearance from any diversion during the forbearance period and to establish storage for retention of wet season flows for irrigation use. So by bypassing all inflow to the pond during the forbearance period, the pond will act as storage for surface water diversion with the forbearance period, the pond will act as storage for surface water diversion without diverting water from the stream during the forbearance period. So this satisfies county requirements. It's unclear whether it will be approved by CDFW or the state water board, which is why the applicant has proposed a secondary water source. Again, that being the 270,000 gallons of hard tank storage, filled by 50% rainwater catchment, and the remaining 50% through the permitted spring diversion that the applicant has a valid water right for. In either case, use of the well that's onsite that the applicant is using currently will cease. If the pond is approved, use of the well and the water right will cease. Here we have a diagram of the irrigation line. You can see it's called out there that the encroachment permit will need to be obtained. It says if required, but checked with Public Works, and they will need an encroachment permit, subject to some restrictions, to run the line under the county road. So here we have the site map, and as you can see, the cultivation areas and water storage tanks are shown, excuse me, in the center of the parcel. Further details are available on sheet C1 of the site plan that is attached to the staff report. And then on the next slide, we have highlighted the proposed restoration areas. So we'll cover the proposed restoration activities, starting at the northern cultivation area and moving counterclockwise. In the northern cultivation area, all cannabis material will be removed, and all identified species, invasive species, will also be removed, and the area will be replanted with native trees and grass species. Cannabis materials will be removed from the western cultivation area, but that area will be replanted with 225 to 375 Oregon white oaks pursuant to the oak woodland restoration plan that's attached to the staff report. And in the southern area, 2.8 acres of oak woodland enhancement will occur. These woodland enhancements include removal of encroaching conifers, subject to a timber harvest plan that would be prepared by an RPF, and as was discussed in a previous slide, five years of monitoring of the enhancement site for natural revegetation of the Oregon white oak. And last, we have the staff recommendation, which is that the planning commission consider, find that the planning commission has considered the MND for the CMMLUO and the addendum prepared for the Myers and Aquarian project pursuant to section 15164 of SEQA guidelines. Make all required findings for approval of the CUP, and adopt the resolution approving the Myers and Aquarian project, subject to recommended conditions.
Thank you very much. And before we, and we will have a public comment period, starting with giving the applicant or their agent a chance to make a presentation, if they wish. But before that, we have a chance for commissioners to ask staff questions, starting with Commissioner Landry.
Okay. So this is supposed to be a mixed light, but I feel like it's a, it's a outdoor light situation?
It is outdoor and light depth. So covers are pulled on the greenhouses.
Okay, so, the, the resolution attachment one says mixed light cultivation, and in the county summary, it says the project says outdoor.
Yep, through the chair, we're working on trying to pull that up. The computer's a little slow here, but I would say that if that is the case, we do need to strike that in the resolution and change that to reference the light deprivation.
And then the, the other thing is, the aerial imagery seems like it is expanded by about 8,000? I'm guessing feet?
Commissioner Landry, I'm just, where are you, that, where are you referencing that?
From the CDFW information.
Do we have a CDFW comment on this one? I thought we did not. Or, where? Because it was actually something I was going to-
Request?
Well, just kind of ask staff if, if they'd had any communication other than a referral response. What I see here on attachment five, where they list the various agencies whose comments were sought, is that it says California Department of Fish and Wildlife, no response.
I don't think that's accurate.
Okay. I just want to be clear, though. Is there something, is there something in the record that you're referring to, or is it information from outside of our record?
It's information from outside.
I see. Okay.
Could I ask where that come from? We're not aware of that.
The CDFW.
But they haven't provided that to us.
I don't know what to say about that. I've inquired about it, and I got this information.
And just so I'm clear, then, what, the information that you have was, can you restate that?
Just that it's a little bigger than, than by the aerial imagery, and the other component has to do with the pond, and it's proposed to have a 6 million gallon pond as part of the water stuff. And I was looking for clarification on whether that is to, is that the pond that is supposed to be part of a restoration activity in replacing that? And then I would also hope that our cultivator would get the appropriate storage. So those are the comments that I wanted to bring up.
Commissioner Landry, could I just bring up a point of order?
Sure.
It sounds like you talked to CDFW outside of the normal communication of the information within this public hearing?
Exactly.
Well, number one, that needs to be disclosed before we start hearing this item, so that everybody's aware that there has been private communication that has been provided to you that has not been provided to the rest of the commission or to staff. So this is catching us completely off-guard, completely unaware of the fact that they're telling you things that they haven't told us.
Okay, well, I appreciate the point of order, and, yeah, I think, given a little more time to process some of the information, I would definitely be able to acquiesce with the order of operations that we're supposed to be using.
Chair, I'm gonna have to ask for a continuance of this, so that we can bring information into the record. It's now been introduced, and it's got to be responded to. It's got to be verified.
Yeah. Okay.
It would be highly inappropriate to vote on something now, given that information's been produced, it hasn't been made available to the rest of the commission.
Agreed. Totally agree with that. I think, though, we will go ahead, can we-
You can go ahead and continue to take input.
Yeah, because I was gonna, I was gonna give, you know, the public and the applicant the chance. I see Commissioner Mulder has his hand up, too, so, and Commissioner Scavdal. So, Commissioner Mulder.
So, yeah, I don't know. I'm very, very uncomfortable of the process that we're, that we've even started going down, because my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, we do ex parte beforehand, but then we have a staff report, and before we take public comment, and before we get the presentation, we ask clarifications on the staff report presented. If there were adding new information, I think we've already, we've, didn't give the applicant or the public the time to talk about what was presented beforehand. So I'm just kind of fairly uncomfortable at the moment. I don't like feeling that way.
Thank you. Commissioner Scavdal?
I just want to clarify a couple other things, since we had the staff report, so I'm gonna go back to that if I don't mind.
Sure.
I just want to be clear, the, the 6 million gallon water storage pond, that's an existing pond on another parcel, is that correct? Okay. And then if the applicant can't, so the applicant's gonna go through some process to see if that, if they can get that permitted for use. If they can't do that, then they were going to put in storage tanks. And it wasn't clear to me on the site plan where those storage tanks were gonna go. I think you pointed to a spot, but I was trying to find them on the site plan earlier, and I couldn't find them. But that would be like 50 storage tanks, or something in that order, plus or minus, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I believe it's somewhere closer to 80.
Okay, it's a lot.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, I'm sorry, did you have more questions?
I just, I just, in my opinion, if they could permit an existing pond versus having to put in 80 storage tanks, which I think also have impact of plastic storage tanks up there on the hillside. So I just wanted to make that comment, and to be clear that we understood that it was an existing pond, not a new, not a newly constructed pond, not an area that is gonna have to be restored. It's, it's there currently.
There is some restoration work that is proposed.
I understand that.
Restoration. For the pond on the other parcel, that was gonna be part of the presentation on the next project.
Okay.
But it is an existing pond. The applicant would need to get approval from CDFW and the state water board. But it is existing, yeah.
Thank you.
Were there other questions from the commissioners about the staff report? Okay, then seeing none, I would like to offer, even though we are, just to be clear, we are unfortunately going to need to vote to continue this item for tonight, but I would still like to give the applicant or the applicant's agent a chance to speak, if you wish. I see Praj White has just raised his hand. So I'll take Praj White's comment, Praj White first, and then we'll go to other public comment on this item.
Good evening, Commissioner Levy and the rest of the commission and staff. I hope you can hear me clearly this evening?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. Just wanted to touch base, this is a 1.0 project that has been working diligently through the process in order to find itself before the commission this evening. Like most projects that get to the commission, they are very well-vetted, and there was a lot of study and assessment and consideration put into the project. I personally have been onsite several times with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board staff, North Coast, excuse me, the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board staff, State Water Quality Control Board Division of Water Rights, and CDFW staff several times. I know they have been out inspecting the work onsite, and that there is measures within the Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement that guide this process towards completion and getting the water right and using the existing pond. So just wanted to build confidence that it happened. The idea of cultivation area verification, I, you know, I really do not believe that's an issue. It was well-vetted years ago, and under state license review, I'm just not sure where that's coming from, but I wanted to just touch in that that was an issue, is well-vetted and well-monitored, and I really don't believe that's an issue. But just wanted to touch in on those two items. I know that I will be continuing tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing it next time. And if there are any questions from the commission this evening, myself and additional staff are available to answer it. So please call upon us if you have any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Praj. We'll complete public comment, and then when we bring it back to the commission, if anyone does have questions, further questions for you, we thank you for your availability. Okay, and then I'd like to recognize public 5288. That's the only other hand I see raised, and go ahead. It's your three minutes.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I did want to point out the last two things you did, both on the minutes there, and on the continuance on number seven, there was no public comment. If I were to make a public comment, I would say it's totally in line to go ahead and accuse oneself, but, or to, what was the term, abstain. And my understanding of abstention, you can talk to your council that if you don't have enough information to make a decision or to vote, you don't do so. On the second one, number seven, we did not know what you were continuing because there was no project description there that would normally be there. Wanted to make that comment. Now, back to regarding this particular project, I do find it interesting, and I look forward to seeing the information. I do have a problem anytime we have two projects that are so joined at the hip, such as five and six, which are reliant upon the same thing, very similar plans. I do have to, I have to question whether someone's been actually doing their due diligence when we're, what, over seven years into a process, and we're finally here. And I do also question why the, the water source during that seven years has not already been made legal, you know, regarding the powers that be that would have to okay that. I believe, if I understand what's here, that it currently is proposed to be, is solar power with a whisper-watt generator backup? That is a question that is true, and that then it will be, continue to be solar unless they can go to PG&E within five years. Good luck with PG&E in five years anywhere. But those are my comments, and, and I do, do again question the, you know, the, the two projects being not addressed and linked, because they are obviously using the same water source, it appears, and other things must be same ownership. The descriptions are just about exactly the same, as far as how things are being addressed in the projects. And I would like to see some, at least some acknowledgement when you have these things on here, that five and six are joined at the hip, or whatever term you want to use. Thank you for my opportunity to make a comment on this particular project.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you pointing out my oversight in not allowing for public comments on the, the action summary from February and the other one that we continued. You're right, that, even though it was, anyway, that should have had public comment. I apologize that I didn't do that. Well, and I just want to confirm that there's no other, nobody else in the room who wishes to make public comment on this item, before I close public comment. Seeing none, then we will close public comments, bring it back for discussion. Yes, Director Ford?
Need to continue with the public hearing open.
Continue it with the public hearing open. Thank you, so that we can have more public comment. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you. Commissioner Landry, do you have similar type of feedback for item six? Information that you've gotten from, directly from an agency that normally would go through the county?
Well, as was pointed out, I think some of the pond questions would be the same as, as our last public announcement was talking about.
Okay, well, we're not, we're not there yet. But I appreciate, yeah, before we do move on to that item, I want to be very clear that we don't-
Well, if we're gonna have to continue them both, then we should just continue.
I'm not gonna request comments on, on the next, but I'll-
Okay. All right, well, thanks for that clarification. I know that I will need to reopen public comment before we're done, but since we're having a discussion, Commissioner Mulder, go ahead.
So, just a couple questions to the chair to staff. Just to, I don't even know where I go with this, but cultivation, the Cav, cultivation area verification. From my understanding, from all these different projects, I remember when I first started following, those are actually included in the packets at some points in time. But there's a lengthy discussion between county agencies, applicants, and their agents, in what that cultivation area verification is, because that also is tied to an interim permit, correct or incorrect?
That is correct, yes. And I'll just add on to that, that we do have that cultivation area verification information. We just don't have it available here, because we did not expect that to, to come up at this hearing. So we'll make sure to have that information available at the next hearing.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I appreciate the process, and thank you for clarification.
Any other, oh, Commissioner Mulder, go.
So, just for clarification, if, and I think this would be for county council, would the email that's, or whatever communications that's being referred to, would that need to become part of the record now? Or I'm just, I'm trying to figure out. to become part of the record now? Or I'm just, I'm trying to figure out.
If Commissioner Landry is basing his decision based off of extraneous information, then yes, it's already public records by the fact that he sits on the commission and he was asking in his official capacity.
Thank you. So I'm going to request, I'm going to make a motion to continue this to, would it be better for a date uncertain or a date certain with the hearing open?
I would encourage you to continue it to April 20th.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the date of April 20th, and in that request, that whatever ex parte communications were used in the deliberations would be included in that packet. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we, is there any further discussion on that before we vote? I want to, and again, I forgive my slight clumsiness, can I just ask, why, why would I need to leave public comment open tonight when it's going to be a new item on the next agenda?
You're continuing it, and the thing that's going to happen now is that there's going to be this ex parte communication, there's going to be a staff response. All of that then gets to be commented on again.
Sure.
So this is all information that continues. So if you close the public hearing tonight, I know you just closed public comment, but often that is semantic, and, but there is a distinct difference there. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
That the public hearing, the public comment period remains open.
Sure. The public comment on this item, okay.
So the public gets to comment next time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I, just so I don't do this again, if we're, if we have an item that's going to be continued to the next time, and we have, we, and we have, even just to continue it, we have to open public comment here, no?
Well.
If anyone has a comment on the continuance.
We do that here.
Yeah. Maybe we don't have to do that?
We're advised that yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay. So yes, we have to accept public comment on a continuance, even if it's shown on the face of the agenda.
Right. Just like any other item that could be pulled for discussion.
Any other public hearing item, right.
That one can also be commented on.
The struggle is, is that you really can't take action on it.
No.
Because there's nothing to take action on. There's no resolution or anything. But you can continue an item. You can close a public hearing and continue an item and come back and take action on it if there's no new information.
Okay.
So there's the nuance.
I think I follow. But you just said close the hearing, and what I was thinking of is closing the public comment portion of the hearing, and that's, I don't know if that's.
It's, can be largely semantic.
It can be.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that they were going to be able to comment on this again if they're, because there's a number of people in the public.
Yes.
Who may not have commented on this, waiting to see what additional information is there.
Right, of course. So given that, and we now have a motion to continue, but I am going to reopen public comment, or just make clear that public comment remains open for this item?
Just remains open.
Remains open. Okay, enough said then. With that, can we go ahead and have a roll call vote, please?
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Ivor Scavdel.
Yes.
Lennox Landry.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion was just to continue this item, Myers and Aquarian LLC, to the next meeting, which is April 20th. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, we do have a couple more items that we've pulled from consent to consider, or at least, yeah, so, so one of them was the next item, Humboldt Kings LLC, in the New Harris area. I believe it was you, Commissioner Landry, who pulled that, but you're not going to make comments. Is that correct at this time? Given, in light of the experience on the previous one. And let me be really clear.
No comment.
You can, it's totally appropriate to ask questions and make comments about the material that's presented, or the absence of material, but, but it's different to refer to information from the, from the outside. That requires a, an ex parte disclosure. Yes, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that one of the concerns here is that if Commissioner Landry has information that would affect his decision, it would be best to disclose that, and then we would need to continue this item also to be able to evaluate that.
That's reasonable. Commissioner Mulder?
And at this point in time, before the hearing's opened, would be where we disclose any ex parte communications we may or may not have had, correct?
Correct. This would be the appropriate moment.
Was that a prompt to say what I've already said or something?
Just if you could clarify, since it is, it's a separate item on our agenda, so information that you had might or might not, from the previous item, might pertain to this one. But if you do have information that pertains to the Humboldt Kings item, based on outside communications, this would be the time to disclose it.
I think the pond relationship, I think, is the only additional thing.
So to be clear, you are, you are saying that information that you've gathered from an outside communication pertains to this item through the pond?
I, I believe so, yes.
And may affect your decision. Okay. Commissioner Mulder?
So I'm just going to ask a clarifying question. I'm just going to kind of pretend like I was the person that had, like, if I had outside communications with Mr. Holtermann, and it was pertaining to just this project, I think I would have to disclose that possibly. If I talked to a different governmental agency and I had that conversation, I would say, hey, I talked to, let's say Scott Bauer's the only name I can think of from CDFW. I had a conversation with Scott Bauer. This is just, I didn't actually have that. But I think you would have to divulge who you spoke with. And the reason I'm saying this is because when I've gone and talked to applicants or driven out to site visits, I had to disclose every single person that was at the, at the meeting. So just want to clarify.
Okay. So I'm looking to Director and County Council for a little guidance, given, given what we've heard from Commissioner Landry.
I would be uncomfortable with the commission moving ahead with the potential that there's information that's unknown to the other commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, and unknown to staff. And, and I would recommend that you go ahead and open the public hearing, go through the same process we went through on the previous item.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I could say something as well.
Yes, please.
For future references on ex partes, if it's a communication, kind of like Commissioner Mulder was saying, you can state the gist of the conversation that you had with the people, but in this case, he's referring to some graphic representation that no one else has had the ability to look at, and you're not going to be able to, unless you're really great, you know, at topography, I don't know, you're not going to be able to explain that, and it has to be given. So the idea is that everyone on the commission has exactly the same information, and no one commissioner knows more or less than the other. It's a due process issue.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Well, with that, with the understanding that we are, again, going to have to continue this, I would still invite the applicant or the applicant's agent, if they wish to say anything about this project, you're not required to, but if you wish to, you would get to go first before other public comment. I don't see their hands up. Is there anyone in the audience, in the room, who wishes to comment on this item? No. Then we do have one other hand up on the phone. That is Public 5288. Go ahead, and you have three minutes.
Hopefully for the last time, can you hear me at this meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. I wish to make a comment, and I strongly suggest that, that the commissioners do not refrain from personally contacting these agencies to find out what they want. And I'm not going to speak for Scott Bauer or Fish and Wildlife, but what I observed earlier in the process, they were asked for input, they gave repeated input, and public perception is that was not taken to heart, it was not necessarily followed, and that was very disgusting for the public to perceive that. This evening, I want to say that I strongly, and I'm very pleased to see you going to your county council representative for legal questions. I'm very glad to see that other staff members who do not have legal expertise are not intervening and trying to answer those questions. So those are all very good things. But the public is, is very pleased when you take it upon yourselves, if you have a question or whatever, to go directly to the source. And of course, now you have a procedure, it's probably best not to blindside staff. I think they would appreciate, although sometimes we feel like we're blindsided in the public thing, but it'd be nice to bring that document in a timely manner before staff so that they can themselves continue this, and so you're not going through this. Again, these projects, again, I will say, are extremely linked together, should be treated probably is one thing, and I strongly support the fact that you're continuing this until you can get these very relevant questions answered. And of course, possibly at that time, when other comments made. I know basically comment on this one that's being continued, comment on the other one's being continued, and your ability to observe and make further comments, further discussion is precluded at this time. And so I strongly suggest that all of you educate yourselves to your fullest ability so you can make an informed decision next time, and will not have to abstain from voting. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. Bye.
Thank you. And I do now see that Praj White has raised his hand on Zoom, so I believe you are the applicant, or the, the agent for this project, so go ahead, Praj.
Thank you, Mr. Levy, Chair Levy, and Commission. We know this information's kind of side-swiping us this evening, and information that, you know, I personally did meet with all of CDFW staff and felt that we had adequately addressed all of the concerns and all of the information out there. I just wanted to reassure the commission and staff that that due diligence process and that consultation and pre-consultation with agency staff did occur, and we felt that the record was complete. I'm just commenting to set the comment straight. I know that we didn't get a staff report, and so I'm expecting that from here, we're going to close the public comments, and we're going to continue this as we did the item before. Just wanted to be clear that's the case, and it'll give me the opportunity to address any comments or concerns at the next hearing. That's the direct question and asking for clarity.
Yes, that is my intention, that we not have a staff report, that we would just move to a vote on continuing.
Okay, very well.
And so you, yes, you certainly will have, sorry, didn't mean to speak over you. You will have the opportunity to make further comment at the next hearing, and the, the hearing will remain open to public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that is the last of public comment for tonight. The matter will remain open for public comment in the meantime. But at this point, I think I would just be seeking a motion to continue this item to April 20th.
I move that we continue this to April 20th.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have Commissioner Landry moving, Commissioner Mitchell seconding that we continue Humboldt Kings LLC to April 20th. And whenever you're ready, we could get a vote on that.
Yes.
Lennox Landry.
Yes.
Ivor Scavdel.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Humboldt Kings LLC is continued until April 20th. Just want to make sure I didn't overlook anything. I see one more, item eight that was pulled. That's, yes, that's the last one. So item eight is American Hospital Management Corp. in the Willow Creek area. Commissioner Mitchell, you pulled this one. Was it a quick question, or do you think a staff report would be appropriate?
Well, I would like a staff report, mostly focusing on the lengths that we have gone to attempt to bring this to fruition, and why unfortunately it has reached the point of recommending denial.
Great. So, yeah, I'd go ahead and invite a staff report. We will then have a public comment opportunity after that.
My name is Devin Sutten. I'm, I'm an associate planner for the department. It's a new title. I'm getting used to that one, sorry. So for your consideration, this evening is a project for the American Hospital Management Corporation, which is two conditional use permits and three special permits. Oh, sorry, on it. And then one more. So the project's located in the Willow Creek area. It's on Highway 96, just north of the Brandon Mountain, just north of Brandon Mountain Road intersection. So the upper right image there, I think I've got, let's see, a pointer there. Yeah, it didn't show up on the screen. So the upper right image shows Highway 96 running north-south. Brandon Road, Mountain Road is the one that runs east-west, and then the highlighted parcel is there, just north of that intersection. We've got community commercial zoning and commercial services general plan designation. The application in front of you was for distribution, onsite processing, commercial nursery, unknown type of manufacturing, and, and a component of indoor cultivation as well. So the next slide is the communication timeline, and the application was initially submitted in December of 2016. Within about roughly a month, staff reviewed and generated an incomplete letter that requested additional application materials, including site plan revisions. By October 2017, we sent another letter indicating the application would be deemed withdrawn due to inactivity if no response was received within 30 days. Moving forward, we, we generated another incomplete letter in May of 2018, again, requesting additional materials. And at this point, we actually realized and included a request for consent from the Willow Creek Community Church, which actually shares a parcel line to the south. The, the two structures, we can actually go back. And so the upper right image, where the, the red parcel line is, just below that, so they, the two structures are actually quite close to the parcel line, so it's well under the 600-foot setback. And then in October of 2019, we communicated with the applicant via email, indicated the project was currently in suspense because we were waiting for additional materials that we've been waiting for, for a few years. that we've been waiting for, for a few years at that point. We, we kind of offered information about the process for withdrawal, since the application was inadequate for processing, unable to make the findings. And then, more recently, in January of this year, we sent what we call a 30-day letter, and again, we were indicating our intent to bring the forward, project forward for decision using the materials currently on file. We didn't receive any written response to those. I made, in addition to the letter, I had a couple of calls, I left voicemails for the applicant. Haven't heard, I, I spoke with one woman, but she tried to connect me with another person that has, has still not called back or discussed the project. We were kind of willing to have them maybe amend the project, potentially, but again, the application was so, I don't want to, yeah, it was just incomplete. I was going to maybe use some other descriptors that I'll stay away from, but yeah. Our, our recommendation is, is for denial. We, we ask that you find the project exempt from environmental review, find the projects not consistent with our zoning code, or local and state laws, we're unable to make those findings, nor the, nor the findings for approval in county code, and we ask that you adopt the resolution denying the American Hospital Management Corporation conditional use permits and special permits. That concludes my presentation. So, we're, we're available for questions if need be.
Questions or comments?
From the Commission? Yes, Commissioner O'Neal?
So, in, it looks like almost six years, did they ever respond to any of your requests for additional information?
So, through the Chair. This project was actually reassigned to me within the last few months, and so I did do a, you know, kind of a diligent review of the historic discussions and communications with, with the applicant. There, there are a lot of activities that they were proposing on this project, and so there were quite a number of materials that we would need to compile. My personal experience with having, like, the physical file and kind of seeing that some of them have a substantial amount of documentation in them, this one is fairly thin, and I, my assessment of is, it came in as an application, kind of knew it was incomplete to begin with, and that we just really haven't had any advance, advancement on it at all.
If I, if I could add to that, I, I think Commissioner O'Neal, one of the things that you saw in the timeline was that in response to the, was it the 2018 letter that we sent out, there was some information, or 2017 letter, there was some information that came back in, but that information was still inadequate to fully demonstrate that the application complied with the, the findings required of the zoning ordinance.
Do you typically give five or six years for someone to complete an application?
So, one of the things we're running into now is that we have been focusing on bringing forward that, the people who are working diligently to get across the finish line. And so, that means that we haven't been working on people who really aren't doing anything. And so, we've started telling, sending letters out, saying, hey, you really have been silent on this for years, and do you, do you want to do anything? Do you want to take this forward? Do you want to withdraw it? What do you want to do? And when there's no responses in this case, we're bringing these forward for denial. The zoning administrator denied to today under similar circumstances, and there's probably 40% of the remaining cannabis applications that we have that will fall into this category that we will, you will be seeing more of.
I'm, I'm not finding fault in what you, your, your process, I'm just curious as why you allow them this much time to not, you know, it seems like it would have been a 30-day notice you hear, or 60-day, 90-day notice, and not allow it to go on for five or six years.
So, right, and as I mentioned, it's really a resource issue. Having nearly 3,000 applications between 1.0 and 2.0, our focus has been moving people forward who are diligently trying to, to get to approval, and we're at a point now where we're starting to get to the place where we're looking at these applications that are just horribly incomplete, that couldn't be approved in their current format, and so we're bringing them forward.
And you said previously, how many of these do you think you have?
Well, originally, we got, I mean, before December 31st of 2016, we had 2,376 applications. We've probably taken in 600, 600 2.0 applications, so we've taken in approximately 3,000 applications total. So, we've probably got about 700 applications left in the queue, and probably somewhere approaching 300 are, are similar to these.
So, are we going to have to have a hearing on every one of those 300?
Unfortunately, there will have to be a hearing on most of those. We're trying to send as many as possible to the zoning administrator, just to not clog the planning commission agenda. Some of them are zoning clearance certificates. We've probably denied 20 to 30 zoning clearance certificates.
So, I was wondering if maybe there was a way that you could do a bulk removal?
We, we are looking at that, that's, we believe that's a great idea, and we will explore that more.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulder, you've had your hand up.
Couple of things. First off, just a point of clarity, and I want to double-check if for some reason the applicant pops on, we have to allow them 15 minutes, is that correct or incorrect?
That, that was going to be the first thing I'd do, you know, when we get to public comment.
Okay, thank you. And then, the next one, this is through the Chair to staff. I understand, like, this project was out there for about five years or something like that, but the way I'm reading it, it was never operating, nor is it currently operating, is that correct or incorrect?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, I just wanted to touch in to the Director here, he mentioned something about 40% of, or so there's about 300 applications, and just, you know, there's concerns out there with the public. The way I understand it, if there, if an applicant isn't diligently communicating with staff, they aren't currently operating under an interim, is my understanding, is that correct?
That, that would be correct.
Thank you for that.
And I just want to note that something that Mr. Sutphin had in the staff report was, which I appreciated, is that you had a conversation with the applicant on 2/15, and indicated, basically, I don't need to paraphrase the whole thing, but, but you said it would be more affordable for them if they would simply withdraw, rather than go through with a hearing recommending denial, which of course, also would save, you know, staff, save our time, save staff resources. So, I mean, I, I do appreciate that you tried to find a graceful off-ramp. Thank you. Were there other? No, yeah, I have not done public comment, so I will, I will do that. I do want to first ask if by any chance, we have one of the few individuals in the Zoom room or on the phone is the applicant or agent for this project, I would invite you to raise your hand if you would like to speak. Doesn't look like that's the case, but there is one hand raised, so I will now go to Public 5288, and, and it is your three minutes, sir.
Ken Swawski, I thought I was done. If it was April 1st, I'd go ahead and claim to be the applicant on this one and wanted to move forward, but it's not. I strongly support you finding some way to bundle those 300 together. I promise that I will not be pulling them from consent, either in the zoning administrator meeting, where I believe they actually do belong, and support the process. I don't know if it will actually change, have, have you go to a 2.5 to enable you to do that, but if you do, I think that saving's there. The public is hoping that the fees that were originally collected on this would cover the cost of winding things down, that would be sad to see your staff time, and I wish to see that minimized, the minimum cost to the public, to get rid of these outstanding permits. I also do have, if I understood the math, could be corrected, question you want to ask, there's 400 left that's anticipated to be brought to you, that people are working diligently on, after seven years, and they haven't come to fruition. I personally think that there should be a deadline put in the relatively near future where those are also dealt with in some kind of a bundle form. You have the hearing, if they can prove they're moving forward, doing their due diligence, then of course, they have the right to probably go under 2.0 or 1.0. But I think it's time that we basically get to that point and wind the thing down, close this thing off, and move on with other staff time being spent on other things the public feel would be more productive, such as finishing up the general plan. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution, which does the following: Find that the American Hospital Management Corporation, CUP, and special permits are exempt from CEQA per Section 15270. Find the applicant has not provided sufficient evidence necessary to make the required findings for approval, and deny the American Hospital Management Corporate Conditional Use permits and special permits.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Mulder, to deny the American Hospital Management Corp. conditional use permit and special permit. Any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, then I think we're ready for roll call. Vote, please.
Lonex Landry?
Yes.
Ivor Scavdel?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neal?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And so, the motion passes unanimously to deny that project, and that brings us to the close of the Item F, which is items pulled from consent. On our agenda, we have nothing under Section G, which is old business, and nothing under H, new business. Under I, Director Ford, is there anything you'd like to, under report from Planner?
Sure. The Board of Supervisors upheld the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the Davy's Lot Line Adjustment and Zone Reclassification. That was the site that's out, just south of the Arcata Community Forest, and, and so that was approved. We've had a number of items at the Board, they were primarily related to code enforcement, though we gave the annual report, and then we took some items forward for lean assessments, but those, those haven't been in front of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Director. Any comments for the Director, I mean, or questions? Okay. Thank you so much for that update. That leaves us with the last item, Planning Commissioner Discussion Items. Commissioner Mulder?
Who do we apologize to if we didn't bring our Form 700 with us, because we had a busy week, even though it was on our calendar?
I guess that would be Laura.
I tried online, and I am just technologically not lucky, or whatever it was, but I spent 30 minutes trying to do it and was unsuccessful.
Okay. Well, thanks for the cautionary tale and reminder. Nope, you're not. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn this meeting, and we'll see everyone again on April 20th. Thank you so much for your time.